Goodness gracious. Goodness gracious, goodness gracious, goodness gracious. The reason that I'm saying goodness gracious is because we were doing just fine. We were doing just fine as a community and then we got booted off. Oh my goodness gracious. Alright. I don't know what happened with that one y'all. I really don't know. However, we were doing just fine and then we got booted off. Alright, so we're gonna pick back up where we left off so that way we can maximize the amount of uh study that we get. Alright, so my apologies again. I'm not sure what happened with that one. But YouTube kicked us off. Alright, so let's go ahead and continue with this question. Alright, there are five men and three women in a room. What percentage are women? Let me actually do something real quick before we before we do this. Alright. Again, I am not sure what happened with that one. Oh, I don't know what happened with that one. However, let's continue, shall we? Let's continue. So for whatever reason, whatever reason, we got kicked off of YouTube for a quick second. Alright, but we are back on it so that way you guys can get the math that you need in order to pass the ASVAB and anything else that you're trying to do. Alright, so there are five men and three women in a room. What percentage are women? This is a great question. Alright. Let me go ahead and get my uh my writing utensil once again. Alright, there are five men and three women in a room. So we got our five men. Right, we are going to add our three women, right, giving us a total amount of eight people in a room. Because it's our total amount, eight will represent our 100%. Alright, I think that's where we left off, somewhere around there. Alright, eight is our 100%. Now, that being said, because eight is our 100%, the bigger number, which is eight, will go on the outside. The smaller number, which is the three women, cuz we're solving for the percentage that are women, will go on the inside. Eight doesn't go into three. However, we're going to add a zero here. Eight does go into thirty, a total of three times. Right, eight times three is twenty-four. Okay, thirty minus twenty-four is six. We're going to add another zero here. We're gonna drop that zero down from the heavens to give us sixty. Eight goes into sixty, a total of seven times. Seven times eight is fifty-six. We're gonna subtract these. Sixty minus fifty-six gives us a remainder of four. We're going to add yet another zero. We're gonna drop this zero down from the heavens, giving us forty. And we know that eight goes into forty, a total of five times evenly. Five times eight is forty. And forty minus forty gives us zero math to continue. Alright, I think this is where we left off. Alright, I'm not sure if this was the last thing that you seen before it got cut off, but if so... Okay, if this is the last thing that you've seen, then fantastic. Alright, so so far we have point three seven five. Okay, point three seven five. Because we have our answer in decimal form, we have to multiply it by a hundred. Right, AKA just moving this decimal two places to the right, giving us thirty-seven point five percent. Thirty-seven point five percent of these people are women. Let's go to our answer key, look at right there. B would be the correct answer. Thirty-seven point five percent of our people are women. Shout out to the fam here who said that they passed their ASVAB with a seventy-three. Congrats on that. That's actually a really good score. Alright. And you got high blood pressure. Sorry about the high blood pressure. Alright, from the bottom of my heart, I'm sorry about the high blood pressure. However, you scored a seventy-three on the test and that is incredible. Alright, that is incredible. There is still hope for you to join. I just want you to know that. Alright, there's still hope for you to join. Alright, I hope everybody's following along, following along with this question. If so, I'm gonna go ahead and clear this off the screen so we can move into the next one. Alright, let's try it in reverse. There are five men and eight, I'm sorry, there are five men and three women in a room. What percentage of the people are men? So, we already know that our total percentage of people, I'm sorry, our total amount of people in the room are our five men plus the three women. This is important because both men and women represent the total amount of people that are in the room. Okay, so eight would be our 100%. I think I was communicating that I just like to do this personally because I like to know what number we're dealing with that represents our total amount of people. Okay, if we didn't do this, it becomes a little confusing for some people. You know, some people think that the five men are the 100% that they need to work with. However, that's not the case. We need to add the three women that are also in the room to find the total amount of people that are, the total amount of the percentage of the men that are in the room. Okay? So eight represents our total amount. Alright, so our eight will go on the outside and our five would go on the inside. Eight doesn't go into five, so we're gonna put our decimal up top. Eight does go into fifty. How many times does eight go into fifty? Total of six times. Six times eight. Forty-eight. Fifty minus forty-eight gives us two as a remainder. We're gonna add our zero, we're gonna drop that zero down. Giving us twenty. Eight goes into twenty twice, two times eight, sixteen. Twenty minus sixteen gives us four as a remainder. We're gonna add our other zero, drop this bad boy all the way down here. Right? Eight goes to forty, five times. Boom. Five times eight is forty, giving us zero math left to do. Alright, over here we have our decimal answer, point six two five. Alright. In order to get this decimal turned into a percentage, what do we need to do? We need to multiply by one hundred because a percentage is anything based out of one hundred. So, we're gonna move this decimal two places to the right. Y'all should be tracking by now cuz it's all repetition. Giving us an answer of sixty-two point five. Okay, sixty-two point five percent of people are men. Do we have that in our answer key? Sixty-five, sixty-four, sixty-three, sixty-two. Boom. D would be the correct answer. Alright. D would be the correct answer. Sixty-two point five. Does anybody have any questions so far? Welcome. If I haven't already told you, welcome. Welcome to today's study session. Alright. I'm reading y'all's comments as you, as we go on. Alright, so welcome, welcome, welcome. Sixty-two point five. My man Glow, Glowwish, sixty-two point five, correct answer. That's what I'm talking about. Pisces Energy, OMG, I needed this right now. Boom. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Take these answers with you cuz you're gonna need it on your test. Alright? Listen, if you're tuning into this part of the study session, we have been going for maybe about forty minutes prior to this, so this section might not be very long unless y'all are telling me that you wanna keep going. Alright? So let's go ahead and just dive into some numbers straight up. Alright? Enough of the word problems. Let's go ahead and just dive into some of these numbers. Alright, what is ten percent of seventy? Ten percent of seventy. Let me go ahead and clear this off the screen. Ten percent of seventy. In order for us to solve this, what we're going to do is we're gonna take this ten percent. Okay, we're gonna actually move the decimal two places to the left, giving us point one. We don't need to add the zero cuz it's useless, it's worthless, it's useless, it doesn't exist, right? So point one. Now what we're going to do is we're gonna take this seventy. We're going to multiply it by point one. We know that one times anything is itself. Right? One times zero, zero, one times seven, seven, right? However, this decimal, right? This decimal is one place from the right, meaning we're gonna take this decimal and move it one place to the left. I hope I didn't lose anybody by doing that. Giving us seven as our answer, seven point zero or just simply seven. Alright, that was the long mathematical way of just simply doing this. Anytime you see ten percent of anything, right? Just take the decimal on the end of the number and move it one place over to the left. Okay? Giving you seven point zero or seven. Alright, but I just wanted to show you the long mathematical way because sometimes you have to use that on the actual test itself. Great job, seven percent. Oh, hold on. I think I lost somebody. Did I lose you or you still with me? Alright, cuz I don't mind explaining it if I need to explain it. Alright, just a quick recap on this question. What is seven percent, I'm sorry, ten percent of seventy? Again, anytime you have ten percent of anything, what you're gonna do is you're gonna take the decimal and you're just gonna move it one place over to the left. Alright, giving you seven percent. However, if for whatever reason you wanna do it the long way, all I did was take uh, I moved the decimal place on this ten percent, I moved it two places over to the left. Okay? Reason that I did that is to show you that not all the time we're gonna have ten percent, an easy number like ten percent. You might have twelve percent, you might have seventeen percent. This would be the steps that you need to take in order to do it properly. Okay? Move the decimal place, two places over to the left, giving you point one. Right, and then multiplying that number by seventy. Alright, and then in doing so, what you'll notice is that this decimal gets moved one place over, similar to the beginning, giving us an answer of seven percent. Alright, that's just a quick recap. Alright, boom, we're cooking, we're cooking, we're cooking. Amaya, welcome to the study session. Welcome to the study session. Alright, let's go ahead and move on to the next question. Alright, another ten percent question. Okay, so this will be easy. All of us can do this in our head and I'll show you how. Okay? I'll do the easy way that everybody knows first. Whenever you see ten percent of any number in the world, okay? Just take the decimal and move it one place over to the left. That's it. Question is over. Question is done. Ten percent of thirty is three. Okay, ten percent of thirty is three. So, now that everybody's on the same page when it comes to the easy way of doing things, let me show you the correct way of doing things, the mathematical way of doing things. Cuz again, this number is not always going to be ten percent. You might have, what is twenty-three percent of thirty? Okay, this is how we solve it. We're gonna take this ten percent. We're taking this ten percent, we're converting the percentage into a decimal cuz we need a decimal in order for us to continue. Right? A percentage is anything out of a one hundred, so we're gonna move the decimal two places to the left. For those of you who are confused on why two places, one hundred has two zeros. Okay, a percentage is anything based out of a hundred. So these two zeros is why we move the decimal either two places to the left or at the end, two places to the right. Okay? That's why. We're just, it's anything based out of one hundred. Alright, y'all don't need to use the super chat for this one. That one was for free. Okay, just keep it in your back pocket if for whatever reason you need it. Alright, so we have point one. Right, ten percent as a decimal is gonna be written as oh, I messed up that number. As point one. As point one, okay? Thirty times point one. We know that one times anything is itself, so our number down here will be thirty. However, this decimal that's here is one place from the right. So we're gonna take this decimal that's here and move it one place to the left, giving us three point zero, AKA three, as our final answer. Three percent. D would be the correct answer. Alright. I hope everybody's tracking. I hope everybody's tracking. I hope to see some thumbs up in the chat, in the chat section. If you're listening to the sound of my voice, go ahead and hit that like button. Alright, keep them likes up. Go ahead and hit that like button so that way everybody can benefit from this video. Three would be the correct answer. Alright, let's move on. Cuz I feel like those, those questions are too easy. Here we go. What is fifteen percent of fifty-five? Alright, the reason that I showed you guys the long way is because now you're going to need to know how to do it the long way. Alright. What is fifteen percent of fifty, uh, fifteen percent of fifty-five? Well, first, let's take our fifteen percent. Let's convert it to a decimal. So we're gonna take the decimal, we're gonna move it two places to the left, giving us point one five as our decimal, point one five. Now, we're gonna take fifty-five and we're going to multiply it by point one five. Let's see what we get. Five times five is twenty-five. Our five goes down here, our two goes up here. Five times five again is twenty-five. Plus two is twenty-seven. Okay, now we're gonna move to the one. However, we need to put a placeholder zero. Don't forget that when you're multiplying numbers, okay? You need a placeholder zero. And we know that one times five is five. One times five is five again. We're gonna add these down here. Five plus zero is five. Seven plus five is what? Twelve. Carry our one, if y'all could see that one right there. One plus two is three. Plus five is eight. Alright. Eight, two, five. Now I want y'all to notice, see this, let's go back to that decimal now. You see this decimal that's right here. Okay, we're gonna, it's how many places from the right? It's one, two places from the right. So now, we're going to take that decimal and move it one, two places to the left, giving us an answer of eight point two five. Fifteen percent of fifty-five is eight point two five. Did I lose anybody on that question? Oh, y'all are tracking. Y'all are tracking. It looks like y'all are tracking to me. Eight point two five. So we don't have any questions on it, we don't have any questions on this, on this uh question here cuz I'm about to move on. Bingo. Mackenzie Williams, spot on. Eight point two five. Glowwish, spot on. Eight point two five. Boom. Alright, alright. It looks like we're tracking. Oh, hold on. Let me go ahead and, before we move on, let's go ahead and let me explain a little bit more. Alright, so I'll do a quick recap. Alright? Just so that everybody's on this, on the same page. Can I explain a little more? Yes, I surely can explain a little more. That's no problem. Also, in the comment sections, if you feel like you can explain it in a better way than I can or that I'm doing, by all means, go ahead and comment and help your battle buddies in the comment section also. Alright? So, I don't know which part you want me to explain, but I'll go ahead and try to do a recap of uh, of everything. Okay? Let me clear this screen real quick. Alright, anytime that we are going to figure out what is fifteen percent of fifty-five, right, first sloppy five, right? First, we need to change our percentage into a decimal, right? So that was step one. Step one, change the percentage, this percentage right here into a decimal. In order to do that, move the decimal two places to the left. Alright, giving us point one five. That's step one. We need to know that this is point one five. Alright, and now after this, it's just simple multiplication. Alright, so we set up our question earlier by doing this, fifty-five times point one five. Alright, our answer obviously is, what was it? Eight twenty-five? Alright, when you do the math, it's eight twenty-five. Okay, just so that way I don't spend too much time on this per se. Alright? Now, I think this might be the part that throws a lot of people off. Alright, so I want y'all to notice this decimal. Maybe I might do a separate video on multiplying decimals. Okay? Because this is what I think is confusing to some people. Alright, this decimal, how, how many places is it from the right right now? So I'm gonna show you, it's one, two places from the right. The reason that's important is because in our answer, right, this decimal right here, we have to move it two places to the left. Giving us eight point two five as our answer. Alright, hypothetically, in this world over here that doesn't exist, well, we're gonna, I'm gonna show you like why that's kind of important. Alright? So we had fifty-five. Let's say it was fifty-five times one point five, right? Our numbers would still be the same, eight twenty-five down here. But the question would be asked, how many places is this decimal from the right? It's one place from the right, so we would move it one place, giving us an answer of eighty-two point five. Alright? However, if I need to make a separate video on how to multiply decimals, I will do that. Okay? But that's just a quick recap of everything. I hope I, I hope I was able to hit your question um by doing that recap. Alright, before we sprint off, is there another question that y'all, y'all got for me? Alright, boom. Hey, that was a good question. That was a good question. Again, don't feel embarrassed to ask any questions. Alright, this is why we do these live study sessions in the first place. It would be completely useless if y'all didn't take the opportunity to ask the questions that you have. Alright? Mackenzie, you take your ASVAB when? I think you said tomorrow. Good luck to you. Um, please come back and let us know how you do. Alright? That's uh, that's very exciting. Uh, good lord, please be with Mackenzie as, as, as they take their ASVAB tomorrow. Um, the fact that you're even here on this study session says a lot. Alright, so good luck to you and anybody else who got this. So that's exciting. Let's go ahead and move on to the next question. What is a hundred percent of twenty-five? One hundred percent of twenty-five. Let me sprint through this question actually, okay? A lot of people might look at this question and know that a hundred percent of twenty-five is twenty-five. Okay, let me just give you the answer for free. Okay? A hundred percent of twenty-five is twenty-five. And the reason being is if, if there were twenty-five, if there were twenty-five people in a room and all twenty-five people left the room, AKA a hundred percent of the people, how many people left the room? Twenty-five. Okay? However, if we're supposed to solve this mathematically, this is why the answer is an easy, this is why the question is an easy question. Remember, we're gonna change our percentage into a decimal. In order to do that, we need to move the decimal place two places to the left, giving us one as our number. Okay? One hundred percent as a decimal is one. And then we know that when we multiply this, anything times one is itself, twenty-five times one gives us twenty-five as our answer. One hundred percent of twenty-five is twenty-five. Are we tracking? Alright, I see. Oh man, oh man, Bruce, I filled my ASVAB by three points, made a twenty-eight AFQT. The fact that I just read that, let me go ahead and bless you, Bruce. Alright, you can join the military with your score of twenty-eight. I just want you to know that. Alright, as an army recruiter, let me just throw that out there for you. Okay? I don't know what branch you're trying to join. However, you can still join. And this goes for any one of y'all. If y'all scored like a twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, that range? You can still join the military. I don't know why y'all recruiters are not telling you this. Okay? That's for free. If you want to inquire more, go ahead and, and ask your local army recruiter. However, you can still join with a twenty-eight. Alright? You can join with a twenty-eight. But I'll tell you what, I know that you always come to these study sessions, right? So when you go back and take your ASVAB, I'm very excited to hear what your score is going to be. Alright, you're gonna knock it out the park. So here we go, the next question. You're gonna knock it out of the park. What is twenty-five percent of one hundred? So y'all go ahead and try to beat me to the answer, okay? Try to be quick with it. Alright? What is twenty-five percent of one hundred? So by now, you, you should know that step one is turn that uh, percentage into a decimal. Robinson Mendez, your teaching is awesome. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Thank you, thank you, thank you. To God be the glory. I take my test on the twenty-ninth of September. That's right around the corner. The twenty-ninth of September is right around the corner. So good luck to you. By the time that test comes around, you're gonna be ready. the twenty-ninth of september is right around the corner so good luck to you by the time that test comes around you're gonna be ready locked and loaded to knock it out the park alright come back and please let us know how you did on the test alright what is twenty-five percent of a hundred y'all don't forget don't think that I forgot about you I just don't see y'all commenting your 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 uh your answer in the comment section alright here we go so we're gonna change our percentage into a decimal so we have twenty-five we're gonna move this uh decimal two places to the left giving us point two five okay now we're gonna take this one hundred and we are going to multiply by point two five alright five times zero is zero five times zero is zero five times one is five okay don't forget placeholder zero what does this zero mean nothing it's just it's just placeholder okay as we jump now to multiply this two two times zero is zero two times zero is zero and two times one is two alright now we're going to add these up it's gonna be very easy zero zero five plus zeros five and this two is gonna be over here a lot of people might might get itchy and think that the answer is two thousand five hundred that's not the case let me go back and switch my colors I think color coding helps y'all because we're gonna look at this decimal that's right here how many places is this decimal from the right it's two places from the right so we need to now take that same decimal in our answer and move it two places to the left giving us an answer of twenty-five twenty-five percent of one hundred is twenty-five I think I seen somebody said that in the comment section actually alright username light underscore something something taking mine on friday for the navy little bit nervous don't be nervous my man don't be nervous don't be nervous alright congratulations on taking your azvab on friday man a lot of y'all are taking the test that's what I'm talking about if you guys are listening to the sound of my voice hit that subscribe button man y'all being stingy with the hitting the like button too so go ahead and hit the like button everybody hit the like button alright so that way your battle buddies who are also taking the test can benefit from this study session should we do a couple more or y'all wanna end it here to be honest with you cuz I think a lot of y'all at this point are tracking alright y'all seem to be everybody seems to be getting a hang of it alright some sorry let's close it up with a couple more alright couple more and then we'll call it a day let's see what we got what is five percent of ninety alright five percent of ninety let me give you step one and then y'all rush to the answer cuz everybody should have pencil and paper five percent of ninety turn that five percent into a decimal alright good question when are you going live for arithmetic reasoning so I that's a good question that's a really good question if y'all are recommending that I go live for arithmetic reasoning I'll prioritize that uh more I try to do a study sessions based off of what you guys need what you guys are requesting so I know few of you guys want arithmetic reasoning I've also come to learn that y'all a lot of y'all want geometry and then a lot of y'all on top of that want algebra okay so I guess we'll see alright I guess we'll see depending on what the priority is most that's what I will go live and do next alright five percent of ninety let's go ahead and change this five percent into a decimal so we have five here this decimal is gonna be moved one two places to the left we're gonna put our zero in here given us point zero five alright point zero five is the same thing as five percent that's why we did that now we're going to multiply ninety times point zero five come on y'all should have the answer already five times zero is zero five times nine forty-five that's why we do the mental warmups alright and then if you want to let's just do it placeholder zero zero times zero is zero and zero times nine also is zero we're gonna add all these together alright somebody asked me before why do you go so in in detail you know I do it so that way the person who struggles the most can still follow along alright a lot of you guys can use equations in your head and solve these things but some people need to see it written down in basic format alright so that's why I do what I do alright when we go ahead and add these up zero plus zero is zero five plus zero is five four plus zero is four alright by now we should already be seeing a pattern we're gonna look to see how many places this zero here I'm sorry this decimal is from the right it's one two places from the right we're gonna take that decimal move it one two places to the left giving us an answer of four point five bam four point five is five percent of ninety is that what y'all got also bam I see everybody go ahead and talking about four point five that's what I'm talking about that's what I'm talking about alright so again I'm an army recruiter alright to address bruce sorry I missed your question alright so the question so my air force can pass me with twenty-eight on the AFQT how can I tell them that I pass instead of failing alright so again I don't know if this is for all branches however I know for the army you can join with below a thirty-one I think it's like a twenty-one and higher right maybe nineteen and higher twenty-one and higher something like that alright and then it looks like somebody and mackenzie answered your question so even better boom alright so don't go to your air force recruiter and and start beefing with your air force recruiter and tell him oh you know simba told me that I listen alright I'm I'm I represent army alright so if I wish it was the same uh if not then just jump over to the army you know let's jump over to the army my man alright here we go two more of these questions and then we're gonna call it a day alright we might do some cool down multiplications or something like that but uh but for the most part we'll call it a day three percent of two hundred and ten what is three percent of two hundred and ten alright let's see who can solve the question first me or you alright let's see who can comment the answer first mirror you so here we go I'm gonna change this percentage into a decimal alright this three the decimal is here I'll move it one two places to the left fill this little space here with a zero giving me point zero three as a decimal then I'm gonna drop down this bad boy two hundred and ten let's write it down here we're gonna multiply it by point zero three bam look at that now we're gonna multiply this going across zero times three is zero three times one is three three times two is six right we're gonna put our placeholder zero here zero times zero is zero zero times one is zero zero times two is also zero we're gonna add this together zero plus zero is zero three plus zero is three six plus zero is six zero plus zero is zero alright so we have this decimal this decimal here right is what one two places from the right but take this decimal here one two places to the left to the left giving us our answer of six point three three percent of two hundred and ten is six point three did anybody get that in the comment section alright damn y'all quick alright alright look at that man look at that so what y'all are telling me is that you're tracking what y'all are telling me is that when when y'all go take your azvab this week on friday on tuesday tomorrow that y'all know how to deal with percentages that's what I'm seeing here alright I actually feel very proud alright that's what I'm talking about six point three is the correct answer that's what I'm talking about man you know what one of these days I might have to do an interactive live I might have to bring like click on y'all to join and explain to the rest of the class how you came up with your answer you know one of these days I might do something like that you know so that way y'all could stand up here in front of your peers and explain to the rest of class how you solved your answer so y'all think you nice alright let's jump into the next question let's jump into the next question the last question okay because what do we need to continue this for if y'all are tracking last one last one y'all wanna do a competition who can solve it first like last time or y'all just wanna take your time alright last one before we jump into questions closing questions okay what is seventy-five percent of eighty-eight you know what let's make it a competition cuz cuz y'all really think you're nice for real so first I'm gonna explain it as I go alright so first things first is we're gonna take this percentage we're gonna turn it into a decimal so seventy-five as a percentage as a decimal we're gonna move the decimal one two places to the left repetition by now right giving us an answer of point seven five next thing we're gonna do is drop down this eighty-eight bam we're gonna multiply it by point seven five our decimal cuz we wanna know what seventy-five percent is of eighty-eight now we're gonna do simple math multiplication five times eight is forty put our zero down here we put our four up here boom five times eight again is forty plus four is forty-four forty-four we're gonna add a placeholder zero okay cuz we have a double digit that we're multiplying seven times eight is fifty-six so we're gonna put our six down here oh forgive me y'all and we're gonna put the five here okay fifty-six seven times eight again is fifty-six plus five is sixty-one sixty-one boom now we're gonna add zero plus zero is zero four plus six is ten we're gonna put our zero here we're gonna put our one here one plus four is five plus one is six and six plus zero is also six looks like a big answer however it's not cuz we're not done you see this zero decimal here it's what two places from the right isn't that right so now we're gonna take it and put it two places to the left to the left to the left giving us a final answer of sixty-six seventy-five percent of eighty-eight is sixty-six great job man great job so I'm looking in the comment section and y'all are tracking to me listen if nobody has ever right if a recruiter has never given you a round of applause let me give you all a round of applause alright let me give you all a round of applause that is fantastic that is absolutely fantastic bam that's what I'm talking about listen that was our last question alright that was our last question because y'all are y'all are tracking y'all are tracking so to close right this is how we solve for percentages you're going to need to know this specifically most likely there might be some arithmetic reasoning questions that involves percentages alright so don't get lazy when you're solving your your questions actually take the time to take the time to uh solve out the questions alright know how to change a percentage into a decimal know how to turn a decimal back into a percentages you know know the basic steps on how to do each one alright it's gonna be very important take this with you okay practice it over and over and over no matter how many times you want go back on my channel and watch the 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 questions on percentages and just keep it fresh in your mind I got videos on percentages I got videos on fractions I got videos on arithmetic reasoning just over and over a bunch of them okay so take this time to study alright to those of you guys who are taking the azvab uh soon again heavenly father we thank you for those who came in today's live study session bless them and keep them in their journeys please keep the language of math fresh in their in their minds uh may you guys go out and succeed and do great things remember that you can do all things through christ who strengthens you alright so I'm proud of you congratulations before I close the live study session I'm just browsing to see if y'all have any last minute questions if not we're gonna wrap it up for the day alright you can support the channel by hitting that like button by hitting that subscribe button and by dropping super chats alright uh however you wanna support the channel by all means share this page and do everything that you guys can do alright so great job to you your videos are fantastic it's really helped me with the azvab I was thirty-seven before watching and no man I really appreciate that and now it's fifty-seven my goodness gracious fantastic may lord bless you may you continue to rise and do great things I hope all of y'all process is uh is 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 pretty simple it's pretty smooth that is awesome I be reading y'all's testimony man a lot of y'all be like uh you know I scored a twenty-one before I watched your videos and then now you know I'm able to score a forty-five or whatever the case may be you know and I think that's pretty remarkable so great job to you great job to you and may you continue to do great things let me see if there's any other last minute remarks thirty minutes a day is enough alright thirty minutes of studying a day is actually a lot okay and it's good to just keep the math fresh in your mind so if you're doing that then fantastic I pray you all pass the test thank you yes heavenly father bless our teacher oh thank you very much god bless you god bless you god bless you the azvab word knowledge math knowledge arithmetic reasoning in the order I'm not sure what order it is but it's something like that when will I do this again I'll probably do this within the week okay within the week just to keep it fresh and I might hit algebra or geometry or since I heard somebody say something about arithmetic reasoning I might do it again something like that okay just to keep you guys fresh alright so what I don't even know what day today is however in the next couple days just look out push the uh next to the subscribe button there's a bell icon okay just push the bell icon and then you'll get a notification simba alexander is live doing another study session alright so that's the easiest way to keep up with these live study sessions but I think we've been doing it like every three days it seems like at least for this past week or two so just uh just stay tuned for that got you I'm a lock-in arithmetic reasoning I'm a lock-in arithmetic reasoning it's gonna be Got you. I'm gonna lock in arithmetic reasoning. I'm gonna lock in arithmetic reasoning. It's gonna be somewhere in there, somewhere soon. Or you could just go on my channel and look at the lot, the last live sessions. You'll see a bunch of arithmetic reasoning on there. Alright, that's it for me, ladies and gentlemen. God bless you. Uh, always remember that success is made by actions, so get up, go grind. I'll see you next time.